All right. We call our Cleveland County Commission Court to order to welcome all of our guests and thank you all for coming. We do have agendas up here if you would get one, we'd like one. We'll have roll call first. Mr. Warren Cobb, Ms. Jenowa is here, Mr. Jay Hendrick is here, Mr. Ryan Hill.
Here.
We have four. This time we're all asked everyone to stand and we're going to pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States. Salute pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no bounds. Let us pray. Thank you Father for all your blessings. Father, we ask you for your wisdom this evening. We ask you Father to guide us in order our footsteps to make good decisions for Cleveland County and Cleveland County citizens. We pray God that you will bless our county and we pray that you will bless our nation and our state, Father. Just help us to be alight. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Mr. Daniel White approached me late Thursday night. I missed his phone call. He tried to get to him on Thursday, but we didn't talk Friday. But he asked us to speak on the agenda for... So I need to...
To Michael Mochon's secretary in the straight?
Cash. Do you have a second? Any discussion? All in favor of saying aye? Most of you Yeah, Mr. Daniel White, if you'll come. Paul, Mr. White, you know, I think you know all the commissioners?
Yes, yes, absolutely. Y'all all know my wife and niece. First of all, I want to say thank you to the public judge and to all the county commission for giving me the opportunity to address and share my heart on this very important Sometimes we're obsessed with the idea of progress. And notice I said "we" because I'm in the same boat. Sometimes we're obsessed with the idea of progress. We applaud ourselves for doing so when in fact we haven't actually changed for the better. We just changed. We've become addicted to changing things just to say we did something. We have convinced ourselves that change always equals progress. There are things that need change, but progress is not progressive if we're doing something for the wrong reasons. Sometimes we become so open-minded that our brains have fallen out of our heads. Even so, our brains may justify and accelerate progress, but the heart knows deep down the truth that the brain can't hide. So progress, for the sake of progress, is never a good thing. This county is covered by paved roads that are falling apart. Hard anywhere you can go without hitting a pothole. This is not only an inconvenience, this is something that damages cars and costs everyone money. This is also something that devalues our homes if we live on a road that's falling apart. It's hard to imagine that you were considering replacing a bridge that services three houses and putting a Band-Aid on a bridge that services 21 houses. Taking money to prioritize a bridge project and move it to first on the list ahead of all the others. So what's the reason that's being given? It's being gotten speculation. Speculation that one man can profit himself by selling property and selling homes. I think most county voters would ask you to simply fix what we already have instead of catering to the benefit of one individual. Government should never be in a situation where one man gets priority over everyone else. If I was to donate money to the 911 center, would my calls get priority? If I was to donate money to the sheriff's department, would I get more patrols by my house? If I was to donate money to the ambulance service, should they come to my house when I break my ankle instead of to your house when you're having a heart attack? Wealth and money should not buy influence and put one man before another. Decisions should be based on need instead of priority being bought by those who can afford to pay for it. The proposal the commission is taking up today is not in the best interest of this county and should be stopped. Government is not something to be bought by the wealthy over those who have less. Elected officials are elected to serve all the people, not just one person. My wife's going to hand out this package. As you get your package, you will notice on the first page, County Road 84, the Evans Bridge or the Cleveland Lake Bridge versus County Road 863, and you can read for yourself there. There was a study done on that. And it's pretty down at the bottom. It says concerning these two bridges, which bridge qualifies for top priority? It's pretty simple to figure out which bridge qualifies for the top priority. Flip over to page two, you will see that is the bridge inspection page. It is highlighted there for you. Up there on the average daily traffic, you can drop down there to the dirt road bridge on County Road 863. There it runs through our farm. That's an average of 45. Down there on the Cleveland Lake Bridge is an average of 60. The Cleveland Lake Bridge is used 34% more than the dirt road bridge. That's pretty self-explanatory. Over on the back page, quickly, funding schools with tax-based revenue. With the idea of building homes and developing a spot, all that sounds great. Sounds good. We're increasing the tax base. We're going to provide money for schools. Just go to the 50 homes. One five acre tracts comes up from 60,310 to 120,062 for an average of 90,186. The Cleveland County school system receives 58% of the tax revenue from the property tax based homes. So 58% of the 90,186, remember that's based on 50 homes, that comes to $52,307. The average salary of a Cleveland County teacher is $58,000. Fifty, the property tax on 50 homes will not pay for the salary of one teacher. The Cleveland Lake Bridge needs to be worked on before the dirt road bridge because it is the worst. The Cleveland Lake Bridge needs to be worked on this summer so the people can go out the 84 dirt road when the weather is not so bad. Y'all know how that 84 road is in the wintertime, in places it is almost impassable. Now, let's talk about the old dirt road that runs through our farm. There's a lot of songs been about dirt roads. Ryan sang some of them. A new song that Ryan may sing someday may be titled "You Cannot Take The Road Out Of The Country, But You Can Take The Country Out Of The Road." If you paved that dirt road, that's exactly what you have done. Because after it's paved, guess what? It's still going to have the same potholes in it then that it has now. It's going to be just like any other one in this county. It's just going to be an old paved road with potholes in it. I believe right now that that old dirt road down there, that a lot of people in this room up here has got a lot of memories about it. Some of us in here grew up down there. But if that old dirt road could talk, I believe that old dirt road would just say, "Y'all just leave me alone. Spend the money somewhere else in the county where it's really big." I appreciate y'all's time. I want to say one thing about this, and this would be mostly about the dirt road. Let me back up and say this. If you want to build the bridges, build the bridges. And I can notice I said bridges. I'm not against building bridges. I'm for building bridges. But if you're going to build one bridge, you build both bridges. You make both bridges last 50 years. Not one a Band-Aid for 10 years and listen over here brand new that don't even serve many folks. But I'm going to say this, and I'm not going to choke up. Every one of y'all knew my daddy. My daddy loved the county. My daddy loved that community down there. And I'm glad. My daddy passed away November 30, and I'm glad that he's not here to see what's going on right now. Because he loved that place down there. And to pave that road and not get Cleveland Lake, the justice that they need is an absolute disgrace to anything to do with this county. I appreciate it. Thank y'all so much. My wife's got some petitions right here that she wants to give to Ryan. And I appreciate y'all's time. Appreciate you listening. If you've got any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer them best I can whenever you...
No, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Let's see if you two ask to speak.
That's okay.
All right. We have comments from officials in board members. We have Mayor Rodney Brown. Mayor Rodney Brown, any of you two gentlemen have anything you want to say? We asked, I think we asked y'all to come?
Yeah, I'll start.
Yes, sir.
I want to thank y'all for allowing me to come and speak, y'all, on the highest of town, Ranbury, and on behalf of the two councils. We, Ranbury, as you know, the population over like 400, you know. Our tax base is very limited. We raise on us so much tribute. And I've had that in the past, and I appreciate that. I think it's a good thing, all the help that we got. And so we're sure at the mercy of the commission or whatever y'all decided to do, whether it be for MOU or whether it be for the trash pickup or the trash stuff. So I will present the MOU agreement and the trash agreement to the council because we really don't have a choice, you know. And we're, I'm going to put that before the council next Monday night. The council maybe may have it up for Monday. But that's really about all I have to say. I appreciate the support y'all give us. I know all I do. And I thank you for doing great for us, and I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Rodney Brown?
Basically, we got the MOU for the city of Hefflin. The only concerns I had was the rates. And I don't know if y'all determined what the rate should be, if y'all determined any of the rates, like with your pothole filler, what's it going to cost us. So, you know, those things, you know, we'll want to be able to order, say, hey, like an Alacard. Say, hey, we got 42 bottles. Right now, we are subbing our potholes out because it's cheaper for us to sub them out than it is for us to do them ourselves after I calculated the time we spent digging them out and doing those things. So I don't know if you're going to have those. In the memorandum of understanding, it's kind of a vague memorandum.
So we just pull them off of the MOU. So whether the MOU releases is they're rate cheap, that's where we utilize our equipment.
Okay.
So it changes.
Mr. Stone?
Just to say, equal, equal. When you say that you're going to patch the hole, one thing I would suggest, you see what you're getting now, is make sure when you, if you say you're going to leave 40 potholes patched based on it's going to be in a week or it's still be there when we come back like we are now, the way you're doing it now, it's almost like it's over with. It's part of the road. I just want to make sure that you also, that the county, that you think about what quality job you're going to get.
Yeah. And I don't have a problem with the memorandum of understanding. I understand there's got to be some kind of contract between the cities and the counties. But, you know, we want to make sure we still have the freedom. I don't want you to go pick up County Road 27. I know we had a little issue with County Road 27. I know Sam was going to pick it up. I understand. And then basically said, "We can't pick it up within the city limits." I don't really agree with that. I mean, if we're, the city of Hefflin's in the county. So, I mean, city of Ranbury, we're in the county. I thought we were all in this together. I really did. I didn't, you know, when I come into office, I agreed. I said, you know, "I don't need any animosity. I want us all to get along. If we're going to move forward, we got to all get along." But when we go picking and choosing our battles, I think, I think we're going the wrong way. I really do. I think we got to, if there's trash on the side of the road and you've got a county truck that's going to bypass that trash because they're not getting paid, we're still putting tax dollars into this county, you see. And we're, and we don't ask a lot out of y'all guys. We really don't. I don't, I'm not beating you down and asking you to do anything else, but I also don't want to be beat down with a bunch of beetles. You see what I'm saying? So, you know, just keep that in mind and that we are a part of this county. And I know a lot of times, it kind of feels like we're two separate entities, but we're not. We're all in this together, and we're always going to be there to help you guys too. But I don't want you to think that we're not willing to go and do whatever you want to do. I think me and Lee's got a really good relationship. I think I got a good relationship with all you guys. But basically, I just want to say that, just, you know, keep that in mind. I don't want to be separated over a simple contract.
Okay. Do, I don't know what is our practice on that, but we know, who would that, who would make that decision about picking up like what they were wanting 27? Is that a...
Going to get show value or something. That's what I heard.
Yeah, yeah, I got, I, you know, it's, it's no big deal. It's just a little things.
And that may be Sam's misunderstanding.
Yeah, I can't really speak to it because I really, that's very hard to say.
Do you know anything, Sheriff, on that? Sam works under you. And I think Sam was picking up 27 and anything?
I was told we couldn't, that they, that they were not able to show them.
They were not allowed. It's basically, the verdict was they're not allowed to pick up within the city limits. And, and I find it hard to even fathom that any one of y'all would tell them that, hey, you're not allowed to pick up within the city limits.
I think this be a misunderstanding.
I don't know that it, I don't know that it would be allowed. It was just, we try to get it valid in the county. You know what I mean? At the end of the day, it was probably good.
Yeah. I got, well, I mean, if they're coming through, you know what I'm saying? It just didn't make sense to me. But, but, I mean, we got to do...
You know, the road comment 27, which turns into a county...
Yeah, we'll both share that, though. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
That may just be something to say...
Well, it's just misunderstanding.
Yeah.
He's having a John's talk.
All right, John, your turn. You, you sheriff, you have anything to say?
Yes, sir.
I have a lot. Just going to have the work session. I didn't have the monthly report for April, so I brought it today. Now, I said this is, was as of April, so this stuff's just a little bit more now. Our current population, end of April, we had 62 inmates. We either had bonded in the sentence or for release. That's a total of 80 for the month of April. For the month, we had 623 man hours. That inmate, he dealt man hours. Had 435 bags of trash collected off roadways. Had 650 tires collected from roadways. And I said various other large items also. Travel investigations, we had 16 felony warrants served, 10 misdemeanor and other violations. We had 103 civil papers served. I had 19 felony on DRS, 14 misdemeanor on DRS. I had 133 incident and offense reports completed. The three random sex offender compliance checks. We logged a total of just shy of 17,000 miles. We went to 16,919. We had a total of 1,486 business checks for the month. And I did talk to Lisa, or sent her an email about, I think I talked to somebody last time about the deed housing contracts that we have. I said, I think you and Sheriff talked to you, or mentioned it. It's coming up. I think that you liked it. So I called Ross, I called Glenn. And there was much to take on some more responsibility as far as the booking process. And I kind of thought, I was looking to do that when it go up, you know, some of the housing contracts. So I sent Lisa the updated, some changes that we like to see. That's all I have.
Your my name, Sheriff?
Yes, sir.
I received, please just send over the original contract. I've been out of the office, so I haven't gotten any updates. But once I get those, I'll sit down and work with them and get...
Well, I said, if you make a question or nothing, just call me or whatever. I can do the best I can.
Did Fred sue you or quote on that roof?
He did. Yeah. They bought a little 11,000. Our P, y'all, if our P ain't cut that much in.
I just wanted to bring it up.
Yeah, he did.
Fred, what about this year, food, what you took?
We skimmed by last month. I don't know, I should ask for a lift. I don't know what our amount is now in the count. I think Paul did find out that we can use, if we run out on our, you know, we'll get from state, if we run out, we can dip into the city funds to help. So, and that's, and also, I guess Lisa sent it to you also, but I did add in there we'd like to have our, the portion that comes to the sheriff's office on the feeding portion of that contract. We'd like to see it up a little bit since the inflation of groceries has gone up some. So, and that kind of helped out on the, on that side of it. But I believe that we, right now, we're okay for a few more months.
Yes, sir, Mr. Hendrick?
So, when you're asking for increase in next year's budget, are you making the board that's your...
Oh, this is for the housing contract for...
Oh, okay.
Yes, sir.
For the city.
And that's what I was talking about. See, we get, I can't remember the amount, but we get a portion that comes, comes to the sheriff's office, and that's what we're talking about. Might say that, raise a few dollars to kind of help out on the feeding side.
The goal is to get that reviewed, the entities for the June work section, mostly to approve of the June meeting.
Because it's going to make the July, I say.
Thanks for the place in June of July.
Yeah.
Is that, is that going to be enough time to give the decisions? Because they got to have the council accept it. And I need a special week. If it's that tight.
Mayor, I would say that would be...
May, may, may.
Yeah. So, something about that. So you're saying the increase, we talked about this much before, and one of my suggestions is, it ain't just the municipalities' increase, it's also the county as a whole, that we need to look at the money as a whole, not just an increase just to those people. So you're saying part of that money needs to come from the general fund or where you're funded from. You can't just say, hey, it's going to be $10,000 and we're going to split it between two entities. The jail is housed by the county, not housed by the city of Hefflin and the city of Ranbury.
Yes, sir. The deal between the cities is just for, per inmate.
Yes, sir.
And then it's for, for three days, then we take the rest.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's just, you know, it's pretty simple. We just go figure out there and if the cities agree to it. But they got to get the council to come through.
And it wouldn't, and it wouldn't allow to, the mayor wouldn't like to replace, you know what I mean, that, that money lost. It would just kind of help building...
Keep up.
Right, yeah. Because I mean, I'm talking about, just, I mean, this dollar, you know, maybe a few dollars more is what I'm talking, I mean, how about like hundreds of dollars, maybe only just a few dollars.
I guess you know it's... And I hate to speak as a municipality commissioner, and I am. And so I got to look at the taxpayers in my district, paying to run that jail now with a one cent sales tax. And when that one cent sales tax passed, it was like $450,000 a year. Now it's a hundred something thousand. So all I'm saying is, in agreement with the city of Hefflin and the city of Ranbury, that, that whatever the county's doing with the money, that one cent sales tax is generating an increase yearly, a more tax revenue coming into the county. I'm saying at some point, you know, I've got to look at some of my guys too.
But these agreements are when we're holding municipal inmates.
I understand.
This, this is, once they get past that three day point, they're considered accounting for the county.
Right. And I understand. I'm just saying, when I come in office, it's $3 and then it went to $5 or $15. I thought, well, it's just $3. Heck, that'd be. Well, the agreement was the one cent sales tax is the fund, the holding of the inmates. And then the city and municipalities will fund additional funding. But, but you know, if the mayor's agreed to it, I'm just saying that there's a funding there. And I follow those numbers and I see it every year as a commission, that we're generating that much more money. I mean, if the mayor's agreed to it, and I understand what you're saying about housing inmates, but I just want to say, you know, there's agreements back when we went after the money, like we started out with a $30 court fee to build a new jail. Well, then the sheriff then come to us and said, well, you know, used to, the old jail just had one guy sitting down there about 8:00 to sleep at night. Well, now, they have a whole, he come back and I think he did it around 12 or 13. And it brings me to mind, the most of this is in the newspaper. And I just went back and researched it. And then that's when I, and I mostly researched it from the library. And then when I looked at all this other stuff, it sort of said that that one cent sales tax was for the funding of the running of the jail, not for the, for the guys, not for you.
Right.
It's the running of the jail. And I'm just saying, at that time, the city, the county didn't have a one cent. But in the same process, when the jail was built, there was about $60,000, I think, shy of making their payment, yearly payment on the jail. So they also put part of that one cent sales tax to continue to make us a jail, which you know, we got to borrow money to upgrade the jail next year anyway. But I'm just saying, it's just sort of, you know, I just, you know, I got to, I want to make sure we're doing, I mean, it'd be fair, but also...
What's the current fee now, 2250?
For what? 32.
32. Oh, it's 32?
32, yeah.
Okay.
Is that, was that...
Right. May I say something to this?
Yes, sir. I was just going to ask you, do you know what that money is?
I think it's 32.
It's 30 something, but from what the research, what the inmate is talking about, we're supposed to be still under a memorandum, memorandum of understanding from 2001, where the commissioners agreed that, like, by the city of Hefflin giving up that one cent sales tax, that our inmates are supposed to be housed for the meals and Medicare. The money that we give to the library is supposed to be taken place by the money that we give up in the one cent sales tax. And from my research, Phil Webb moderated that meeting. I think you signed up on it. I talked to Phil, Rex Nolan, and those guys was all the commissioners in. And in that, we're supposed to not have to pay dispatch fees. Well, now, we're paying $87,000 a year dispatch fees and we're paying for prisoners. So at some point, the city's got to make the same. So this is our same. So I'm going to bring you the memorandum of understanding, and we're going to ask the commissioners to honor that memorandum of understanding that was put in place in 2001. Because the city did, that come at a cost, the city of Hefflin, of about $250,000 a year of us giving that one cent tax up. If you go back, that was in June of 2001, if you researched that. But we want to do our part. I am, I'm not trying to get out of anything, but it seems like every time we need money, we go to the cities. Because that's, that's just the easy route to go to. Well, I mean, I think we're done with that. So we, we're under the memorandum of understanding from 2001. We have found no, no changes in that. We pulled all the minutes up from the city of Hefflin. That agreement was made in June of 2001. And then it rocked on there. It finished out the recent administration. In the second year of Anna Berry is when they got the first bill, where she paid it. And then along from that, she just kept paying, not, not knowing or not doing the research that it took to find out why are we paying bill that we just now get. And then it's when, at that time, the dispatch fees was $35,000. Now it's $87,000. I mean, so we got to renegotiate a lot of things here in the coming months before next year's budget. So not to say that we won't increase.
Right. And the reason, and I guess the reason they going, or the reason we was wanting to go up on it is because they come to us, or Ross has and Glenn, because they don't have the officer named fingerprint guys. Well, them fingerprints are attached to their criminal histories. And if, just say, if we arrest a certain person for whatever, we need to pull that criminal history. I mean, just take, like, for a sex offender or a convicted felon. We know he's been arrested for a felony, or felony, and he's been convicted of it. But we got to pull his criminal history. Well, it shows he's got two misdemeanors. Well, we have to issue him a misdemeanor permit when he shouldn't because he's a convicted...
But my point was, the city of Hefflin in 2001 give up the one cent tax.
Right.
That's in right. That's in bold, black and white. In order to fund the jail, because jail was upside down. In order to fund the jail, because jail was upside down. Here we are twenty years, twenty-two years later, that doesn't matter. We have given approximately two hundred, two hundred fifty thousand a year to fund the jail from the, from the citizens of Hefflin out of that. I mean, at what point is there a return on that investment? Because that's over four million dollars we've given to a jail. You see what I'm saying? But every time we turn around, you know, really allowed it to go up? I mean, you have a memorandum for a reason. I guarantee you, we sign this memorandum with the county on the notepad, I guarantee you, I'll get paid quickly. And that's, that's, and I should it, because I signed it. But you gotta remember, the county signed one in two thousand and one, too. At what point do we, do we honor that?
Oh, I understand.
If we're not gonna honor one, we shouldn't honor any of them.
Right.
You see what I'm saying? So, I think, you know, we just need to all sit down, informally, whatever we gotta do, hash it out, and, uh, and we're used to get along with it.
When will you be meeting again? June more or not? I mean, you'll meet tomorrow night. Y'all meet twice a month?
We meet twice a month. Well, we'll charge our budget numbers in June, July, ready for all of us.
So, June, June, what, what day, June first or second? First or third?
Second or fourth.
Second and fourth Tuesday.
Tuesday, yes, sir.
Okay. Second and fourth Tuesday. And let me discuss, we'll discuss with him, see about the possibility of having a special company to, to work on this.
Yeah, that'd be great. I think we can come to term.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for John?
John.
Yes.
So, on that roof, so how much money you think's in that line out of that? Because I, I'm trying to give.
I think it's only a line, the line.
Okay, we'll give a line, and then I'll give a, we got to button this up sooner or later.
Right. Well, we need them caps. They need the truth. I think if we just.
Still, and pick some places where it's leaking.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I said, Wayne was that, they had to go up with his motor or something, so.
I'll get him to give me a copy of that, and then I'll probably get him set for meeting back over there. I think we start from, right there with that one little bridge messed up, and go down the road where the water's coming in, and stop that, I think we should have had it.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to four, uh, bid openings, bridge bid opening, there was a, um, bridge opening, I think, when was that skating, when, or is that?
This already.
Tournament opening. Awards, awards and presentations, skating public areas, consent agenda. Looking at the consent agenda, um, not every resolution was initial. Thank you, Mayor. Resolution number three.
Excuse me, I, number two also has been marked, really, it's marked now, so that happens every night.
All right, so, let's start off with resolution number three, uh, because that was beginning with Hartz, four hundred dollars a month, we're gonna move that resolution down to E, under new business.
One for Hartz?
Yes, we're gonna make that E. And then eight. Eight was concerning, uh, the animal shelter. Two hundred thousand toward the animal shelter. We're gonna make that F. And then, going back up here to the hospital board. Vacancy. We're gonna make that, uh, G. So, everything on the consent agenda was initial by all four commissioners, with the exceptions of uh, three, eight, and two.
All of that done good?
Number eight is the animal shelter, D, F. And G will be the hospital board. We have a motion to accept the consent agenda as it is. We have a second. Do you have a second, Mr. Cobb?
Yes.
Okay. A second, any discussion on the consent agenda? All in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, you have, Mr.? Moving down to E business. A. Whereas Cleveland County Sheriff is requesting a pay grade change and update of the job description for his chief clerk. Whereas the current pay grade for the sheriff's department chief clerk is fourteen. But other chief clerks in the county are at pay grade seventeen. Whereas the pay grade change will not affect the pay for employees currently in action, or for the Cleveland County Commission agrees to change the pay grade for the sheriff's department chief clerk from pay grade fourteen to pay grade seventeen. I'll entertain a motion.
Aye.
Any discussion? All in favor saying aye? Any opposed? Got more opposed? Emmett, did you say aye?
I said aye.
So, the ayes have it, three, one. Motion carries. New business out of B. Whereas Cleveland, the Cleveland County Sheriff's Department is requesting a change in its organizational chart involving a pay grade, a job title, and a job description changes for its final clerk position. Whereas the change requested is to reflect the changes duties required by this position. Whereas the current pay grade for the sheriff's department final clerk is ten, and the sheriff is requesting that the new pay grade be fourteen, and the job title be changed to warrant clerk. Will this job description change to match the job title? Whereas the current position of final clerk will be eliminated from the sheriff's department organizational chart. I'll entertain a motion.
There's two more.
Ah, thank you, guys. Whereas, the changes will result in a pay increase to a dollar eight an hour, or approximately eight fifty increase in the salary load lines for remaining portion of, uh, fiscal year twenty twenty-three. Therefore, the Cleveland County Commission approves these changes. I'll entertain a motion there. You have a motion, do we have a second? Okay, motion dies for lack of second. Moving on to out of C. Whereas Cleveland County, whereas Cleveland County has had a memorandum of understanding for most of the cities within Cleveland County concerning maintenance assistance on roads within each city. Whereas the previous MOUs are in need of update, therefore, the Cleveland County Commission is asked to accept the new version of the MOU for each city and authorized county that's in here to sign on behalf of the county. I'll entertain a motion. Got a motion, you got a second by Mr. Owens. Any discussion?
Or, um, I mean, we don't make sure the city's approved. I mean, we're approving it without them approving it.
They can certainly approve it, and if it goes to them, if they choose not to approve it, they just don't, they just don't enter the agreement.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. You manage, right? I'm D. Whereas our funding is available for stormwater projects through a grant process. Whereas the grant is thirty percent county managing grant.
Thirty, thirty-five.
Whereas the grant is thirty-five percent?
What I have to say.
Yes. Did I say thirty percent? It's tough, it is.
People wouldn't bet.
County managing grant for stormwater projects with a thirty-five percent eligible, eligible for an encounter grant. Therefore, the Cleveland County Commission authorized the county to be here to apply for the grant through Alabama Department of Fundamental Management, AVM. I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Mr. Owens, got to Mr. Cobb. Any discussion? Yes, sir. I think you gave an answer first, go ahead.
Uh, on that thirty-five dollar managing grant, is that coming from the road department, or is that coming from general fund money?
That would be the income service.
So, they would, the road department, not from the general fund, okay.
We'll be purchasing, we'll be purchasing the material for the grant and the income, who pays us in time.
Mr. Chambers. Ms. Cobb?
My question is, you will give us a list of the ones that are still promoted?
I'm about to add, we'll do the estimates, all of them, and I'll do the process, we'll, we'll do that.
Okay, that will be for the still promoted bench project, is correct.
All right. Can we read vote? All in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, you manage, so. All right. Moving to three, which is, uh, I'm sorry, which will be E now. Whereas Hartz is requesting that the Cleveland County Commission continue to reimburse them for utility. Yeah. Whereas the Cleveland County Commission has agreed to reimburse Hartz for utility expenses of four hundred dollars per month, not to exceed four thousand eight hundred per year. Whereas the agreement was made due to Hartz providing office space for community actions. Whereas community actions no longer has an office in the Hartz building. Whereas Hartz is requesting that the Cleveland County Commission continue to reimburse them for utility expenses after the end of the current agreement, which terminates at the end of September twenty twenty-three. Whereas the Cleveland County Commission wishes to continue its support of the Hartz nonprofit organization. Therefore, the Cleveland County Commission is asked to task county attorney Jackson Owen with preparing a deal agreement to provide five hundred dollars per month, not to exceed six thousand dollars per year for the utilities, uh, expense reimbursement.
No questions.
Okay. Ms. Cobb, in the first, show us the second. Any discussion? Yes, Mr. Chambers.
Well, I guess the suggestion question, we even, they have an agreement, so this, this can be a donation.
I would do an agreement in this case, specifically because, uh, you previously had one, it is a nonprofit. You are supporting them as a public purpose and a public benefit. Uh, and it used to be sort of a quid pro quo with the office space. But I would do it so it delineates specifically what we're doing for the Hartz organization. And also recognizes what they do for the citizens of the county.
And it's gonna be a year coming up.
I would do it for number three. Would you do one?
I'll pretty soon.
Do we need to put that in the resolution?
Do.
Wait, how?
Would you?
I would make.
Make that a minute?
I would make that a minute for three-year contract.
Three-year contract. You give that minute, okay. Read vote?
We need to put in there that we agreed to the signing contract.
Yeah, the county, the chairman, signing contract.
You give that, Ms. Cobb? Okay. Will I amend that?
It's time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving to, uh, eight, which is gonna be, uh, F now, animal shelter. Where F, I'm starting in the right place, right?
A volunteer group.
Yes, sir.
And Cleveland County has formed, you gotta laugh at yourself.
Whereas a volunteer group in Cleveland County has formed a five oh one C three in order to operate the animal shelter. Whereas the Cleveland County Commission has agreed to contribute two hundred thousand toward the building of the animal shelter. Whereas the mayor of Hefflin has expressed interest in the animal shelter being built in the city. Therefore, the Cleveland County Commission agrees to allow the city of Hefflin to prepare a memorandum of understanding for the city and the county. Once prepared, the county attorney will be consulted to review the MOU, and Chairman Ryan Robertson will sign the MOU on behalf of the county.
I'll make a motion.
Got a motion and a second? Did, you disagree with that? I mean, did I, but I thought she said it before you did.
Maybe, maybe.
She said something. I just recognized that.
Okay.
So, you're the second, Ms. Cobb. All right.
Yeah, I think first, I don't mind, because everyone else said.
Well, I mean, it, it, it does matter.
Okay, okay.
But I mean, you definitely were first.
Okay.
And I heard Ms. Cobb second, and I apologize.
I would like to amend it, amend it.
Okay. You can ask him to amend it, yes.
I would like to say that the county attorney and the commission reviewed it before you signed. That's what I would like to say.
Okay. You good with that?
I'm good with that.
Are you good with that? All right. Anything else?
I said the county attorney amended it, and we'll get it.
All right. Mr. Chambers.
I sort of think we give a cart full of horses. I mean, we haven't seen a business plan from the five oh one C, or is this MOU gonna have, how many slots the county gets, how many slots the city gets? If the five oh one C gonna agree to that, or if the five oh one C is gonna take anything but the wrong yard, or? I mean, we certainly need some details before we start, right, two hundred thousand dollars, but building some property we, we don't own.
Well, and, and, and I guess, and that would be, uh, my question also. So, if you pass this, two hundred thousand is sent to the city of Hefflin right away?
No.
You're saying that you contribute the two hundred thousand towards the building, so, okay. The building of the animal shelter, but we're not sending it in this regulation. Yes, sir.
A, a couple of months ago, I sort of threw it out there, that we need to get all people involved in this, sit down in the room, and let's make some decisions. I don't think this is sitting down, making no decisions. I mean, this is, I mean, is, is the city gonna own the building, the city gonna pay the insurance on the building? They assuming the life building on the building? I mean, there's a lot of questions that I think we can answer before we start just shoving this money around.
Okay. You don't have a responsibility, you don't want no, uh, you don't want to be really involved in it. And what we're trying to do now is go in a way, and I have been meeting with the mayor, and I've been discussing this. But you can't have it both ways. If you wanna, if you wanna put the Cleveland County Commission on the building, we'll be glad to. But you don't want, you don't want no liability, you don't want nothing. Now, the city is not, my understanding, and I have been to the, to the, to the animal shelter meetings, the five oh one C, they got their information, and and me and Roger has been down, I've been down two or three times with the one down in Randolph County, and I've called others. For the five oh one C, the county nor the city will be responsible for what goes on in the five, at the five oh one C. But at the end of the day, once you start sending your own contractors and everything, then you're tying yourself deeper into it. The word, the city is gonna do the agreement with the five oh one C. And then we're gonna get prices, but, you know, they're gonna spend a whole lot of money and a whole lot of time if they're gonna, if you want them to tote the water and draw the water, the whole nine yards. So, at the end of the day, we're, they're gonna feel us, give the county commission receipts. And every project I've ever been involved in in this county, I don't think you'd see one of them that we didn't get three dollars in return of our money. Or I feel that way, and if you don't, then.
Okay. It's been a request to call to the vote. All in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
And three ayes, ayes have it. Moving to, uh, G, hospital board. I think, uh, do we entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion.
And your motion is to?
My mo- motion is, is to add Sherri Brown back to the board.
Hospital board.
Hospital board.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Yes, ma'am. Question, go ahead.
I saw, I, I, maybe Smallwood to the, back to.
Okay, all right. You good with that? Does that need to be two separate? Just add, you find, because I can amend it.
This, this is the board basis.
So, the motion would be to, and Nikki Owens Smallwood, and also Sherri Brown, back to the hospital board.
Leaving only one vacant.
Leaving only one vacant. And everybody's good with that?
Good.
First, second, y'all are all good. All right, any discussion? All in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, you manage. That concludes all the visits. That concludes all the visits. Moving down to sports from staff. Ms. Copeland, county administrator.
Yes, I have a quick list this time, I'm gonna get pretty quickly. Um, I work with the resource officer to complete lunchtime liability insurance renewal questionnaires that would determine our rates for the, the coming year. Um, I'm telling you, the quarter of the fireworks tax, we're still even looking into, um, if, whether it's being collected and sent to the county. I'm still waiting for a little bit more information to have you on that. Um, I attended an ACCA class, um, which complete, completely completed my coursework, it was certified by county administrator. Of course, can't do that for three years, but I actually already have all the coursework behind me, and there are some other elective classes that I'm still waiting to take because there is my position. And then you go, um, and want continuing education.
I went to the class also, uh, to sit in that class. I would like to, for, the commission to look, if you got a load on our, our, the ladies that are left behind, I would love to see that some of them, I think those are good classes, especially here in this office, that they would understand county administration, the county government more. I would like permission to look at, that we sort of get, we get the, that the one that really needs probably other ones to go, at least where we will rotate to where the ladies will understand more and meet with the people. Like, one of the classes that Lisa went into was a group of District Seven, you're in, right? Where they meet five, and they sit down at the table, and they discuss what's going on in other counties, and sort of give you a range of, I think, two heads is better than one. For the money that we spend, I think that we ought to look at that, that we do send more than just our county administrator, because one day they're gonna move up, just my opinion.
You were actually talking about the ACCA conference.
Yeah, ACC.
That was the ACCA conference.
That's one of them, I'm not, I'm not familiar with.
Before that, but, um, yeah, it, it is, it really is a good one, to have a breakout group like IAC. It is a good conference to go to. I already do encourage, um, folks in the office to go to some of the classes that I go to. I went to one back in March, I took Emily Woods with me because it was about finance. And then Emily Brown with me to this last one in Prattville, um, a couple of weeks ago, because it was about personal, it just, it just made it simple, that you would take the RHO to a personal class.
The ACCA classes, the commission are, everyone might take one of those, because they're really good.
They really are very important.
They really do.
They're the best for me beyond just the ACCA classes, the ACCA ones are specifically here, for the county administration, so they are very classes. But certainly anybody who's been with the, who understands, are involved in the commission. All right, um, the other thing is, uh, just creating, yeah, ten resolutions for the agenda of this project. There's fifty-three corporate ARCA funds, was, uh, filed through the treasury, that's a once a year, they all, it's pretty involved, which you start actually, um, obligating and spending your funding from ARCA. It's a way, the, the IAC does a great job helping us prepare for that, um. So, you know, it was, it pretty much went off of that issue, we had a little issue with, we have a government number matched up there, UBI, but they have a number of counties that that happened with, so then it was certainly not a big issue, just how they worked out. Um, we have the outside end, you see a panel of JU, et cetera. Uh, using the information from the resource officer, we have payroll direct deposits for eighty-six employees, two times, or eighteen employees, once for a total of one hundred ninety direct deposits, seventeen payroll transfers from various departments to payroll, now three hundred and thirty-eight AP invoices, one hundred ninety-eight AP checks issued, twenty AP transfers from various departments, two to AP account, eleven in the month transfers to support budgeted items and to specify their actions.
Ms. Edwards, I need a question.
Uh, yeah, going back to, uh, eight, nine, I guess eight and nine. One of the things I was just wanting to ask, as I talk about cross-training and understanding each other's job, let's just say if something broke down or something happened, what would, who else could fall in line to do a payroll check in the office? I mean, right now, you could get up and go in there and do payroll.
That would be one.
Okay.
And I'm not saying that it's a good thing, I'm just saying that's going to stand at the moment. Um, I honestly think that if it were that type of situation, I could get in there and look up from Crystal, because she's done it before, I think we can figure it out. But to be comfortable just going in and, and doing payroll, I'm not comfortable with that right now. This is something that I need cross-training with, um, with Emily Brown. And, uh, I already do a lot of the checking, so I'm, I'm certainly aware of like, what benefits and everything that's supposed to come out of every check each month, and what we're, um, our deductions and everything are. But to actually, maybe into the HR software included, I'm not comfortable with that.
Yeah, and, and, and so that's, that's one of the things that, as I, that concerns me, because I want our county employees to get paid. I would just like you to review the office staff and re- review, I know I can talk, uh, outsourcing payroll. I talked about that a time or two, where I, I would like, I would do, like, go across the board. I just feel uncomfortable. You know, we used to, uh, Kim Brown, uh, the other ladies that was in here before, that's reason why I'm more into this cross-training, come out, uh, one set aside, because she catches on to every little thing that she puts. Even if the commission maybe changed that job title to were, or something, I just want, I just, I just feel uncomfortable that all of it lays on one shoulder, and, and, you know, we have, we could probably fall in there, but this day and time, I mean, the way the world is now, you just never know to go to try to figure out who is gonna make payroll for two months, or for, for Miss Bull or Frogger. And I think that's something for us to think about, just that we probably don't look at, because it's always, um, tricky and hard, but. But if you will look at that and see if there is a program that we could get working on, just to make sure if something happens, that this payroll will get done.
I agree, and Philly and I have actually spoken about it a number of times, that we need to take that time to cross-train. And I do her, her part, and she did my part, which is fine. You know, just do it a couple of months, so that we would be more comfortable with that whole process. But, um, rest assured, even if she were gone for whatever reason, it would be, we would make a way to get people paid, because the worst case scenario, we would call our little software company and get support, and we would get people paid. But it should not be that way, it should be that we can handle it here in office, so.
Well, I think, I think, I think you've got a good team, I'm just saying, I just wanna see the, the B, maybe deal more with the D, to get a little better understanding of work, because you got, if it, if it happened in budget time, and it happened in audit time, where you're doing gassing and everything else, I've seen it. You're not gonna have time to do payroll. So to say, oh, I can get it, unless you work around the clock.
Right.
So I just want, I just want to bring up, that everybody's attention.
And in the past, they, they worked, they used to always cross-train, when one of them went over and worked in payroll.
Yeah, I think the past been a situation where, you know, with the turnover that we've had in this office, we just say you're a void man, carrier and half, it's, it's been a lot to learn, our own job, and then try to, you know, and every month, it sounds like I handle a little bit more of my, some of the things that I'm doing off to my employees. Crystal knows that, Emily Woods knows that, I've been handling things. And then, of course, those two, they can support, um, Emily Brown to a certain extent as well. So we do have a good team, and we did work well together, but we, you're, you are correct, we definitely need to cross-train more and put a little more emphasis on that. And I'm hoping as we all become a little bit more and more comfortable with what we're doing, that we can get to that point where we can still sign a little bit of time each, even if it's just a couple of hours each week to try to do a little cross-training.
Yeah, any other questions? Yes, sir.
Oh, could you get us up to Emily, even I'll take work on what the mayor was talking about, um.
Is that too much?
Yeah, I still have something to get, I have something special.
I'm sure we can arrange it.
If you're gonna start working on the budget next month, that's two hundred fifty thousand dollars, we need to see if we have or we don't have.
That was before we entered our, um, you have a copy of it, don't you?
I agree.
You get a copy of it, and just email it to us for whatever trouble you have.
We must, we'll have one, I'll have one, I don't say pretty quick without, um, answers.
I'll put the package together, and then one of the guys turned my truck and poured tea all over, but I do have some, uh, pictures, and where I had spent time, when I, I was working on the library issues, so I just wanted to bring this all out, and, uh, resolutions, but, uh.
If you have time, just get what he's got, and, and make us all copy or email it to us or whatever.
I would.
All right, any other questions? Yes, sir.
No.
Are you sure? Oh, I have. You know, I guess keep it other than talking.
I don't, I don't have to, um, I sit on the scoreboard around, I'll have those estimates together for the next work sessions, and then go through those, and what we got to have. And then I, I got the garbage contracts, bid documents, and the dumpster bid documents. Uh, ready to go advertising this week, and we'll be opening those bids in the June bit. So whatever, June, you got, go and help us.
Okay, any questions, boy? Mr. Oden? Oh, you did, I didn't see you, you usually just talk, yeah?
I know, but I'm trying to, I'm trying to show a little respect your way.
Thank you, thank you.
Uh, on the A four, you've got some work in, but it's not what we expected, right?
Right.
So we're waiting on.
So what I've got on the A four, which is a proposal to put together the, uh, the rehab documents for. Um, so what I'm looking at is just kind of going back, see what I can come up with as far as getting something ready to get out on the rehab portion of that. And so I have a good.
Anybody else got a question? Mr. Oden? Thank you, sir.
Uh, I attended the city and county government, CDA that I go to every year, uh, we all pay the admission fee out, cover my, and all the things, I appreciate that, it's always good information. Um, got a good, just want to update, one of the things that they told us was likely coming, um, you may have seen it, it was in one of the ACCA emails today, that the changes to the competitive bid law have been approved, and they will take effect August first. So the threshold for competitive bid laws is from fifteen thousand now to thirty thousand. There's some other changes within minor things, but that's the biggest one. Um, you all should also receive the draft of the sewer ordinance. Uh, please look through that, email me back any questions, concerns, areas you think we should take out, add in. I went to a number of different sources to try and put that together, and try, I didn't know if we had any areas in the unincorporated county that might be right next to where some sewer access would be available. So I wanted to make sure to include that as well, it's just a second.
Uh, one of the things that you were working on a while back on insurance, have you heard anything back out of that, or are you just still working on it?
Yes, sir.
Uh, back to the sewers bill, does, we have to have a, a meeting for the hearing on that, or to get his vote, or how's that work?
I would suggest the best way to do it, since this is, I know this is gonna be general applicability, um, and it's gonna be limited self-government, so I think best practice is to do a little hearing on it. Once you reach the final draft, if you're ready to adopt.
Yes, sir.
You hear anything on water, she has to?
No, other than I talked to Meg when I was down at the conference on the fifth and sixth. She said that, um, that she is getting some activity and response out of Katie Brits' office this week, where she was not getting any prior response. That, that's the only other thing I'm on.
The last email I sent to Washington, nobody could get a reply.
She's got a response from Katie Brits, chief of staff. I've gotten no responsible letter, I say.
My governor gave a single thing, I guess.
All right, um, anything else? We are meeting with JSU Wednesday at ten. I'm, I'm getting the vibe that JSU may not want to stay in the picture. So I hope everybody's good with that, if it doesn't happen. But we do, we do know what our cost is, we'll present that, and make an alert, saying they're not.
Well, how would they, or, or they say why they have interest?
Just, uh.
The facility is not being used.
I think, I think JSU has had some, a lot of other expenses, and they, you know, they had a few fundraisers, they got new buildings that you're trying to build, but, you know, the logistics. And, and they're not using the building, they may, they may change their mind, they may have had a chance to think about it, but that's just the vibe, or what I'm understanding, that it may not, and I, I didn't, I just get in that vibe, I know when they said it directly, but they, I know that they are looking at the, if the cost is going up, but what a benefit is the cost versus the benefit. Yes, sir.
I was just gonna mention, I was looking at the calendar for next month, the regularly scheduled commission meeting for next month on the nineteenth, that's June, and it's a federal holiday.
Good.
Yeah, I'm just, I don't know if I'll talk about it.
Y'all, yeah. The work session.
There's no holiday on the work session, it's the first, you know, it's, the first Mondays.
The first Monday though, June, um, would be what?
The fifth.
The fifth. And then the nineteenth, is there any idea of you guys looking, okay, the Tuesday, is it the Tuesday?
You're not there for what?
We can do it according to law, we can do it any time, we can just declare it any day that week, right, Rick?
Okay.
Is there a certain day y'all wanna do it that week, right now?
Tuesday's good.
Everybody good with Tuesday? Between, okay, good, I'll turn it on. Any, any other discussion, ayes?
I think we'll have, Lisa, we're gonna do it July the thirteenth over here for the father associations, uh, and they, it's the father associations, uh, annual meeting, where they'll have the, um, poetry, it's all one big meeting every year.
And that's what, they?
It's due on the voting.
Yes, sir.
Uh, some of the classes, I mean, the class that we was in, when we was down at the conference, I'd like for Lisa to sort of put some of that stuff together. Uh, one of it was, it was purely eye opener, is I didn't realize how much our liability insurance was paying out on cyber attacks. Uh, one of the things that they've asked us to do is to adopt a, a data breach notification policy and cyber policy, county-wide. That there includes backing up your computer weekly, and, uh, and I, I know that Lisa doesn't have one on, and if she should on her finance, I mean, nine-one-one's one thing, but on our county finances side, I'd like to see a program put together on that. Uh, so, uh, that was one of the classes that we were in, uh, that, uh, is, and I, I tried to get them to send me a, uh, to let me join, and I'm gonna talk with Sunny about that, because as a commissioner, I feel like I should be able to join. That, you know, you're saying, why can't you go and join? Well, I tried to join, and if we're sending county employees down there, I wanna know, it ain't like, you know, at the Birmingham School, where I don't know what the kids are being taught. So, uh, and it's that we're treated like that, but, I mean, if you're, if they let me in the class, then I would like to be able, because then you can print all that stuff out and let the commission know, uh, because there's really some eye openers that was in that class, uh, you know, from, uh, our audit with our gas fees and all that stuff, and I think, and it's a good question about, if you're under ten billion dollars, and we do the smaller one that we talked about. But there's probably, there's probably something that we could talk more, and then everybody get home to dinner. Uh, I would like to go through those notes that I was taking pictures of off the board, uh, that we discussed, to, uh, see if there's some things that the commission, and they, they've said that we need to adopt this stuff. Uh, you know, and, and not only that, outside vendors, how are we, how are we using our outside vendors as let, as far as letting them in to our system, because you don't know what kind of firewall they got, so therefore, from my understanding is this third-party over here can come in here and claim the site. And, uh, and I, and from my understanding, we don't have anything, we sort of let Crystal, whatever we got, we don't really have anything.
We do have firewalls, and our system is updated, um, fairly often, and, and we do contract that out with Jason Smallwood, of course, he does a lot of our serious network updates and that kind of thing, but, um, you know, it is concerning when you hear how much.
And we're weekly, and we're, back to them weekly. You know, I, I, now, we're. You know, and, and all of our partners need to do that.
Right.
Where we don't lose everything, but now George's, obviously, I talked to her about it, and, and, you know, which hurts us the cabinet at all, you know? And, uh, and, and the way it hurts us back up, I feel real comfortable with that, but I just wanna make sure that, that that's the reason we go to the class, and that's the reason we're listening and, and doing this.
Do we, do we, is that what kind of agreement that we agreed on?
Well, I'm just saying, I'm just, I'm just...
I thought that we had already done that.
I think we have.
It's something, yeah, we, I thought we had already signed some...
I, I've been, uh, but I'm just saying, I just wanna make sure that we have that.
Is it in the policies or procedures, man?
I, I meant that we did have...
There's some way that we have, we have somehow completed.
Yeah, for sure, it's...
Well, that's what I'm trying to remember when you found it.
Okay.
And, uh, and then another thing is, is to go through all county property and county vehicles. Make sure all the cars that are upside down, motors out of them, and the junkyard is off our insurance, and all facilities has, is either on or off, because what they're saying is, they're not gonna say, oh, you missed it, and then we're gonna cover it. So, if we got the boat and booth, that, you know, the roof, that's, uh, let me just bring out that, that's, uh, four hundred and fifty, four hundred and fifty, get the limb off the building, uh, eight hun, nine hundred and fifty, take the tree down. I don't, because we don't know what we're gonna do with the building anyway, that's another building that we have to have. I don't even know if that building there's on our insurance. But the thing about it is, when the public's out there going up and down that raggedy building, and they get hurt, and we're not covered, what they're saying is, what they're saying is, is it comes out of the general fund, it doesn't come out of our insurance. So, all those facilities that are sitting there, I just wanna see it a piece of paper that says they're either insured, or we don't own them. Hopefully, we don't own them, I hope we find one of them.
On, on election day, I think we are covered. That'd be something to check with the ACAA and our liability.
I, I'm glad for that.
I hope.
I just, I did, I just, I, you've seen, you've seen the expression on the four different ones that go up and get the class, of what they kept telling us. If they're not on there, yourself, yourself...
You know, let's check that out, and make sure that on election day, that we would be covered, because, I mean, election is very important. Um, I, I had, I had, he, he should, he and I should've talked today, but didn't get around to talking.
Those are just things I think we need to work on.
But I, I'm trying.
So, would y'all wanna take the whole tree down, or just, I gotta drop the power, because if limb failed, we're the power head here, so we gotta turn the power off, turn it loose from the building, and then I've got down four fifty to take the limb off. I think we just take the limb off of the four fifty, and then the tree's down there.
I'll try to figure out what we're gonna do.
I'm trying to line up some more, and bring that up to mix.
I just want to make sure we don't get liability, where we don't need, where we don't get sued.
All right, anything else?
Well, I would, but...
Yes, sir.
I'm a full order, please. I would like to understand, did, did the on consent agenda, it was numbered five, passed, which was about to break?
Yes, sir.
But I just didn't hear call back, I didn't understand how that's...
Yeah, it was on the consent agenda, in the...
So, if it wasn't specifically addressed, then y'all said something about passing, that would be done back?
Yes, in that consent agenda, that's... In the work, on the, during the work session, they decided to put certain amount of things, certain things on the consent agenda. And before the meeting, each commissioner has a right, this initial... And that was one that all four of mission, mission... No, you know, what I did was, I told, I did not make the consent in...
Well, that's something I just think about.
Right.
Make sure...
That's okay, that's okay, it's, it's a little different.
But you remember when they hung up about the dump trucks, that you've got the bed insured, and then you got the truck insured?
All right, I'll entertain, let's do a general...
Make a motion.
That's it.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye. What they said?